Good morning. This is the Kent County Board of Commissioners Operation Policy Committee Meeting, and today is Tuesday, November 18th. It is 8:30 a.m. and I call this meeting to order. The first item on our agenda is public comment. Public comment is limited to two minutes.
How's everybody doing? Dee Jones, passionate entrepreneur and visionary. First, I like to hold up my badge because I finally successfully brought an event to the DeVos place, so I'm going to spin this around as I believe the universal energy is going to definitely come back to Dee Jones, and I'm going to be a billionaire slash trillionaire one day. I'm definitely going to be a billionaire slash trillionaire one day as I brought the largest esports regional finals in the entire United States during Comic-Con to the DeVos place in Ballroom C. We had over 11 colleges and 17 high schools across the state here. School to see the Detroit schools, especially Detroit Catholic, which is a viral school on ESPN here. Also finally completed the certification. I was so busy, but I completed in a day. I actually got 100% on every quiz. Certified in AI and the work in life from the University of North Florida. So always learning, continuously learning, a lifelong learner will never stop learning and getting these certifications at the highest level possible. Also, a year ago, I got invited, November 18th. We were looking at the unveiling of the soccer stadium. And now I actually have the scarf and one of the few people to have the scarf, the actual scarf for the ACGR club. So excited and just happy to innovate and pioneer and just continuously do the beautiful things I do for Kent County ethically, equitably, bring digital access. I have speaking to a global podcast in a couple of days to some people in Africa that actually build schools and increasing digital equity and finances through the decentralized streaming platform party. So just very excited, very thankful to actually see it through. I've been at this for 70 years, nonstop, consistently passionate, being Dee Jones, authentic every day, every day, every day, every day, every single day I was at this until I got it done. And then we got another competition coming up in 2026, and it's going to get even bigger and better. It's going to be election season, but I'm going to just focus on doing this vision and being sure that the county is equitable and that we continuously lead in and be on LinkedIn again. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Dee. Again, this is the public comment section that is limited to two minutes. There will not be another time for public comment after this time is up. So anybody else that would like to address the committee? If so, please state your name and address, and you have up to two minutes.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Laura Jenovich. I'm an attorney with Foster Swift. We represent Sparta Township. We are here to oppose the village of Sparta's petition to annex the Peterson parcel. As the commission knows, annexation is permanent, and it's a zero-sum game. Contrarily, a public Act 425 agreement is a cooperative alternative that would allow both units of government to benefit without forcing the county board of commissioners to effectively pick a winner. The village, it's no secret, is pursuing cityhood. If there's annexation, it permanently deprives the township of this property from its tax base. Now, nobody's here for $70 a year. They haven't petitioned because of $70 a year. It is about the future tax base of that property. Under an annexation, it has permanently gone from the township. Under a 425 agreement, the township can retain its base operating millage collecting from that property while the village, future city, would be able to collect the millage in excess of that. More of a win-win than what is proposed in the annexation. Despite the village's claims and its written submissions, this is frankly a land grab, and it's something that this commission should decline to endorse. The township and the village have a history of cooperation and working together on 425 agreements, and this property should be treated no differently. I realize a very short time. A few of the village's points that I did want to touch on in my remaining 30 seconds is the concept that only annexation would allow utilities for this property. That's frankly not true. We can see that from prior 425 agreements. Utilities can and often are extended in a mutually beneficial regional cooperation type of Act 425 agreement, and that would be the better way to approach it here. We request that this committee recommend denial to the board of commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
One second to spare.
Nice job. Is there anyone else that would like to address the committee? If so, again, please state your name and address and limit your time to two minutes.
Thank you, Chairman. Jim Lauer, village manager, Village of Sparta. I wasn't sure if you were going to have time for us to talk on the agenda, but just in case, wanted to speak on behalf of the Village of Sparta in support of the petition. You, of course, have the memos in the packet that I saw that was released online. The most current one I'd like to highlight points out that this really is a win-win for everyone. We are a village right now. Of course, we are discussing becoming a city, but that's something the voters will decide in the future. That's not something the Board of Commissioners needs to weigh in on today. That being the case, even as part of the village, the parcel will still be part of Sparta Township. They will still get their tax revenue. They will still have all the benefits that Kent County will have, the Village of Sparta will have, the property owners will have. So there are benefits for Kent County in terms of increased property tax growth, but maybe as importantly, I know you guys have made a priority housing in West Michigan, right? You've put significant funding and effort behind expanding affordable housing and accessible housing for people. And in fact, we partnered with Kent County on your grant program to reform our zoning and reform our master plan to, you know, unlock those opportunities for people. So we believe this is an opportunity for us as a community, Kent County and Sparta as a whole, to put those best practices into place with the annexation, with the parcel. So we also think it helps preserve farmland by compacting that density into dense housing and utilizing our available water and sewer. So you need less acreage for your, you know, septic tanks and wells and those kinds of things. So we think across the board, any way you slice it and dice it, this is good for the community. It's good for sustainability, and it's good for Kent County. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the committee? If so, again, please state your name and address for the committee and limit your comments to no more than two minutes. We've got two people rushing to the podium.
Good morning. My name is Lauren Peterson. I live in 12250 Sparta Avenue, Sparta, Michigan. We're here on the petition for the annexation. That's a word property owner, my brother, sister, and I. My dad passed away about a year ago, and we're kind of just moving forward with what he was focused on. That property got rezoned years ago to light industrial, and it's a perfect, perfect spot for the city, the village, to move into, connect right to the village and to help the growth of the village of Sparta. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Again, next, please state your name and address for the committee and no more than two minutes.
My name is D.L. Bergman. My address is 9280 Sparta Avenue, Sparta, Michigan. I'm the supervisor at Sparta Township, and this is my eighth term, so that's kind of cool. But anyways, I had our planner write up a little letter in, and then just, I'd like to just read it. Our planner is Kevin Yelman. He works for Fresh Coast Planning. Mr. Ramble, Supervisor Bergman, directed me to provide you a copy of Sparta Township's master plan for review by the Operations and Policy Committee as part of their review of the requested Peterson annexation. As the committee will see, a main goal of Sparta Township master plan is the preservation of prime farmland, which is an important component of the community's character and Sparta Township economy. The committee will also see that another goal of the master plan is to promote industrial growth. My understanding is Sparta Township is not opposed to growth, but that growth within the committee be coordinated between the township and the Village of Sparta to ensure that growth is managed to ensure that irreplaceable farmland soils are preserved and a strong diverse economy is developed for community, for the community as a whole and both municipalities. The township believes that 425 agreements are the best way to ensure that the growth continues to be coordinated between the township and the Village of Sparta. In addition to the master plan and master plan map, we have included a copy of the prime farmland soils map for Sparta Township. On my behalf of Sparta Township, Kevin Yelman, Sparta Township Zoning Administrator. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the committee?
I'm Marcy Savage. I'm the Sparta Township clerk. My address is 1025 North Sunset Pines, Sparta, Michigan. I've, I've worked with the township for almost 16 years now, and we've always had a really good relationship with the village. The last couple of years has been a little more rocky as they've been trying to become a city and push things forward and, and a lot of their stuff. They said they were not going to do a land grab, but this is basically what this is. And the township would really like to work with the village. They can still do their, developing the way that they want to do it. We're just asking to do the 425 agreement so that we can still collect our one mill if they do become a city. I just hope you look at that and realize that we do want to work with them regardless of how it's being perceived. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Is there anyone else that would like to address the committee? Again, if so, please state your name and address for the committee, and you have two minutes.
Martin Peterson, 12951 Ball Creek, Kent City. I'm the trustee for the estate. I hear this land grab used, word used a lot here. The village didn't approach us. We approached the village. My dad's been trying to sell this property as light industrial for several years. Nobody's interested. We have no services. Nobody wants to put in well and septic to support their industry. So we approached the village to get those services, and we requested the annexation, not the other way around.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Is there anyone else that would like to address the committee? All right. Seeing no one, we will close the public comment section of our meeting. Commissioners, I need a motion in support to approve last meeting's minutes. I have a motion by DeBoer, supported by Womack. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. All those opposed, last meeting's minutes have been approved. Next item on our agenda is Agenda Letter A, brought to us by the administrator's office. Al?
Yes. Put simply, the board... Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Sorry. I gotta get my volume on, I guess. Although my wife says I have a very large outdoor voice. Indoors, but, yeah. So basically, under Michigan law, the county board is set up to be the arbiter of township-village annexation issues. I remember I famously said this never happens when I first showed up back at Kent County, and I think this is maybe the fifth one. So it has happened more frequently, which is more of a testament to the large amount of growth in Kent County. Unfortunately, the law doesn't really include any type of guidelines or guardrails or requirements for the board. You know, it would be, I'm sure, very comfortable if there was a list of five things, and you could check your way through the list and say, well, they made four of five, so it's good. Or they only made one of five, so it's bad. Or, but, but unfortunately, that's not the case. So this is literally a case where you've been provided hundreds of pages of documentation, and you've heard now at a executive committee meeting, and now at this meeting, the ops meeting, regarding the positions of the parties. And so really, it's incumbent on the board to make a call. So the law simply requires that you decide, and so that is a requirement of the Board of Commissioners.
Great. Thank you, Al. Sorry, I...
Oh, no. Thank you. I...
I tried to forget that now and then.
Yeah, that was my, my, my fault on that. I just thought this needed a little bit more introduction if you had said so. All right. So this would, this is an action request. This would go to full board this coming Thursday on a recommendation from the Ops Committee.
Commissioners, comments, questions, concerns to Al or our staff. Comments and questions are limited to our staff and Al. Commissioner Womack?
Could you go a little more in detail that if, if it moves to the Board of Commissioners Thursday, what decisions would they make? Would it be setting it up for a further review and more in-depth review of this request, or would it be moving it to some type of resolution or vote Thursday?
Okay, yeah. So, thank you for that. So obviously, the committee meeting today is to move it to the board or decide. I think either way, it goes to the board, whether you vote no or yes. You'll make a positive or negative recommendation on the request. The board could ask for more study. I think that when you look at all the attachments, that there's an exhaustive amount of information. So I think the intent would be that the board would vote it up or down in two days. But obviously, the board could make a different decision if it believed that more study was necessary.
Thank you. Great. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, any other questions? Commissioner Coleman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just, so I understand it, the action requests that we're voting on is, is really to recommend a public hearing for this Thursday. So by, by proxy, we're kind of giving our, like, opinion as of now on the, the general issue, but as far as specifically what we're voting on, it's, it's the recommendation to hold a public hearing on this matter?
The statute requires a public hearing, so that's why it's referenced in the AR. Our standing rules require this, this committee to make a recommendation to the board on the merits of the annexation. So the matter before you today is, does it go to the board with a "we recommend it" or a "no, we don't recommend it"? The board has to, under statute, have that public hearing. It's been noticed. So because you have to put the date of the public hearing in the notice before you publish it, that's where this calendar got set for the 20th. So we've published it now. There'll be the public hearing on Thursday. Because it's noticed, even if this board said, "Hold up," I would recommend we go ahead with the public hearing because it's been noticed, and people are aware of that. So on Thursday, we'll have the public hearing. If this committee makes a recommendation, that recommendation would, would be heard by the board on Thursday. The board then could decide, as Al said, up, down, or send it back for more study, or delay it, or any number of motions that they can make on any matter. But it is a board decision under the statute.
Thank you. All right. Any other commissioners' comments or questions? All right, I guess, Commissioner Womack?
It, it, it still looked like the vote is kind of carries two things. I'm very positive about the vote, yes, to send it to the board, especially it's going anyway. And I definitely like to have an opportunity for the person who represents that district to kind of hear what they have to say too, from their studies, or if they choose to do that in the board. But it also says, as if we're recommending it, as if we're, I just want to get that straight. By us sending it to the board, does it also include us recommending as commissioners as if we see we're leaning left or right on this decision?
It, it is my understanding. I see Al shaking his head, yes, and I can let Al or Linda add to that.
Yay or nay on this decision.
It is my understanding that our, our vote would be a recommendation of the annexation to the full board of commissioners. And it, 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 this will go to...
There's your standing.
All right. So, so our standard rule, study and make recommendations to the board on all petitions and communications required to be filled with board relating to annexation, consolidation, or incorporation. So it, it is a, it is a recommendation. And again, it's, this will go to full board with a approval or a yes or a no on Thursday. Commissioner DeBoer?
Thank you, Chair. In a decision like this, that's somewhat difficult to decide, I do kind of rely on the property owner and their perspective. And so I am going to support this just because I do support their property rights and the decision that they would like made. So I just wanted to share a little bit of where I'm coming from, and I realize this is not necessarily a decision that is not going to have some hard feelings at the end of the day, but really, that's where my allegiance is more to, is, is that property owner.
Commissioner Pakla?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Not to use the phrase "I echo Commissioner DeBoer," but I echo Commissioner DeBoer. You know, I, I think for me, as I think about what the recommendation is coming from this body, there are two big things that are weighing in support of me recommending or voting to recommend this to the full board. The first is the property owner conversation, right? This is, there's always a fine balance between what government involves itself in for private property rights and private property rights, right? How are we balancing those two things? How are we making sure that we are not onerously mandating what people can do with their private property rights? The second is, you know, I mean, the, the annexation, as it stands right now, today, on November 18th, 2025, would not change the way the property taxes are collected between the village and the township. There is the potential of a future change of that, but I can't really weigh that or bring that into my consideration because that's not the current state of what's going on, right? Right now, if this property, as requested by the property owner, were to be annexed, the township would still collect millages now and into the future until such time as the village potentially shifts into a city, right? We don't know when that's going to happen. We don't have a timeline for that because the process hasn't started. And that, as we heard earlier today, is something that could potentially happen in the future, but would be decided by the voters of the village. So, you know, I'm inclined to support a recommendation up to the full board for us to have this kind of conversation amongst the 21 commissioners, but for me, those two pieces weigh in in support of supporting the annexation.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments? Commissioner Ponstein?
Thank you, Chair Burrow. So at the end of the day, this discussion isn't about the village or the township. And for me, as a commissioner, I do not live there. It's not going to affect my life, but it's about growth. And the growth in this county is going and going. So, yes, a person's got a right to sell his property to do whatever we want. But somehow, when an owner wants to build a solar farm, a wind farm, a data center, everything now that is just taking our farmland and expanding our growth beyond means. I mean, this is not a role of mine. This is between the village and, and the township. And if they can't come to agreement on what's best for the communities that they represent, I know I can't do it any better. So those are my comments.
All right. Any other commissioners' comments, questions, or concerns? All right. I will just add my kind of two cents to it. As, as a developer builder, again, I do sympathize and, and lean towards private property rights and the owners there. I, I will be in support of the annexations. However, however, that being said, coming from city government prior to this, Wyoming worked out several 425s with my own township. Obviously, it was an easy 425 agreement because M6 kind of separated, and it kind of made it a no-brainer, kind of a simple thing. But in every case, we got along, and we made those agreements willingly. I think I had an attorney on one side call me through this whole process. And I really encourage, hey, come to agreement with a 425. Let's play nice. But that, that being said, again, I am supportive of the annexation. Would I love to see a 425 agreement worked out, just because I think it's the right thing to do as neighbors? Yes, I would like to see that, but that is one commissioner's opinion, and that's all I got to say. All right. I need a motion in support.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Womack, supported by Commissioner Faber. Any other comments, questions, or concerns?
What is the motion?
The motion is to...
Send it with a yes recommendation?
Send it with a yes recommendation, Commissioner Womack. Okay. So we have a, a yes vote, a yes recommendation to hold the public hearing concerning the Village of Sparta's petition for annexation of a property located in Sparta Township. And Commissioner Faber, we still have your support on that. All right. Thank you so much. All right. Any other comments, questions, or concern? All those in favor of sending that recommendation to the full board this... All right. Commissioner Ponstein is requesting a roll call. Do we have our staff ready for that? I'll give you a minute or so to...
Commissioners Pakla?
Yes.
Faber?
Yes.
Womack?
Yes.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Ponstein. Vice Chair Coleman.
Yes.
Chair Burrow.
Yes. All right, that will go to full board with a recommendation to approve this coming Thursday. All right, next item on our agenda is brought to us by the Administrator's Office again. This is to authorize an easement for cell tower and related utility and landscaping easements. Do I have a motion and support on this? I have a motion by Pakla, supported by Womack. Commissioners, comments, questions, concerns? This was in our packet and we have discussed this at length at our previous ops meeting. Commissioner Faber.
Yeah, could someone, so this was the property that we got out of foreclosure for $17,000, I want to say. So this is a pretty hefty return. Maybe I need to get Treasure McGregor on my portfolio. So can, can you explain a little bit of the timeline and why the cell tower, why we're doing an easement, why, why they didn't just purchase the property?
I'll start. Linda can jump in. She was actually involved in the actual negotiations for it. So basically, the, the company had an agreement with the prior owner. And when we purchased the land out of foreclosure, that agreement went away. So they need an agreement with us in order to keep operating the tower. Now, what this is in lieu of is annual payments. It's a one-time payment upfront. Obviously, the annual payments would be quite a bit smaller and it would take some time. When you look at the time value of money, we thought it was better to get the money upfront and have it available. You can see the recommendation is, is to put it in strategic capital for our building projects. And so we thought that would be a good place to put it.
And then we'll continue to own and maintain the property. Who maintains this property on our behalf?
Actually, we negotiated that into the easement agreement so that the tower company will be responsible for maintaining it, mowing the grass, doing the plowing necessary to get there. The big thing that this does for us and the reason we got involved was it does provide potential future space on this tower if the sheriff department needs an antenna out there.
All right, any other commissioners' comments, questions or concerns? I guess I just have one and with that permanent easement in there now, that also gives us the ability, and, and not only with that permanent easement, but allowing the sheriff's department to have other items on that antenna, we are also allowed to pursue a sale of that property to the neighbor or someone else as well, correct? Because we, we really got out of it what we wanted and we could potentially look at that.
If we chose to sell it on the open market, it would be subject to that easement. That's why it's permanent. That, that's why the tower company wants an easement as opposed to a lease.
Excellent, love it. All right, again, this will go to full board and the rec, this is a recommendation to full board and that will go to full board on Thursday. Okay, you have a motion and support on that? All commissioners in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, that will go to full board on Thursday. All right, next item on our agenda, brought to us by the Human Resources Department, the 2026 Management Pay Plan, pay range and wage changes. Do I have a motion and support on that, please?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Womack, supported by Commissioner DeBoer. Commissioners, comments, questions and/or concerns? All right, again, this will go to full board, oh, go to Finance Committee on the second and it will go to full board on the 4th of December. All right, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, that will go to full board on the 4th of December and Finance on the second. Last item, or one of our last items on our agenda miscellaneous, commissioners, any commissioner miscellaneous? All right, seeing none, meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much.